I'd like to welcome everybody to this called meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. And at this time, if you would, just join me in a short prayer. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us today as we do those things that would be pleasing to Thee and would be in the best interest of the city that we all love. In Your name we pray. Would you join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Astor.
Makes it easy, don't it?
Yeah, it does.
Ma'am clerk, would you call the row?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderman Harris.
President.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Vess.
President.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
The called meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman is to discuss issues associated with the New Bern Housing Authority. And I would like to maybe start this meeting off with that some years ago Alderman Bingle and Mayor Lee Bettis at the time had some great concerns about the conditions of Craven Terrace and the need to make similar improvements at Trent Court. And from that, that probably started a model morphing of the housing authority that we didn't even know was taking place at that time. But the ultimate result of what the New Bern Board of Alderman are concerned about is the affordable housing and the condition of housing in the city of New Bern. And with that said, the end result with all of the hard work and all of the differences of opinion is today, the Craven Terrace units and one thing I remember doing during the hurricane is showing the weather channel. I said, "You see that lake out there? You see that lake?" That right there used to be forty-two units of affordable housing at Craven Terrace, and they're not there now. And so, in its place very soon, not necessarily in its place, but because of a lot of cooperation and partnering, the eighty units are now fixing to be completed nearby. So with the new project and with the Craven Terrace and with the concerns of the hurricane, it's a new day in New Bern. It's been a new day, but the hurricane was a wake-up call that we have to, as a city, because a lot of people think that the New Bern Housing Authority is the city, which it is not, we have to communicate better. We have to understand where the housing authority is coming from better, and the housing authority has to understand better where we're coming from. We've tried several things in the last couple of years. We went from, we changed the size of the board to nine, and then we went to eleven. And part of this discussion today will probably be the size of the board. We're trying to find the right fit. You know, looking back, I'm gonna be very open-minded to this. How would I, as an elected official, when I voted to go to nine and I voted to go to eleven, why and how would I vote possibly if we discuss it to reduce the size of the board that I was part of increasing it? And the only thing I can say to that is Craven Terrace renovation probably would not have happened without Alderman Bingle and Mayor Lee Bettis starting the initial concerns and the size of the board going to nine and then the size of the board going to eleven. So again, these are some things I don't have answers to at this time, but we're going to discuss those. We're going to discuss those, and there's actually three options that are being thrown around out there. One is to continue the housing authority as it is and with the hope that the housing authority will reach out to other brother and sister housing authorities throughout the United States of America and look at innovative ideas of things that we can bring to New Bern that are definitely just not the old institutional buildings that you see. That's one thing. Another thing we can do is we can put it under the arm of the city in New Bern, which I don't think any of us on the board want to do. But we will do if it takes that to get affordable housing where it needs to go. Because the end result, the end result is that if we don't do this, I rode by the other night and there was a light on in one of those buildings that flooded. And I don't even think power ought to be on in those buildings myself. But again, that's one seventh of this board. And the other thing we can do, we can put the housing authority under the Redevelopment Commission. So I'm saying all this this morning just to open the healthy discussion of the New Bern Housing Authority Board. And at this time, I'm gonna open this up to the Alderman and any comments they want to make.
Thank you, Mayor Outlaw. Before we get started, I'd like to poll the board and just see that during this process, if we would agree that we may call up Mr. Blaney or Mr. Anderson or one of, you know, any of the members of the housing authority, I want to make sure that we are letting them speak. So I would like to make a motion that as we deem necessary, we would call certain people up to either answer questions or comments on information we might need. So that's my motion.
I second that.
Motion and second is their discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Okay. All right, thank you. So the first thing I think we really need to look at, and I appreciate your comments about, you know, the past and trying to change some of what the housing authority was doing by the board. Originally, it was five. The state statute of North Carolina says the housing authority board must be at least a minimum of five people, no more than eleven. So at that time, we had realized some issues were going on, that we didn't think were in the best interest of the citizens, and we thought nine was the magic number. And we increased the board to nine. After I left office, new things happened and they thought the magic number was eleven. We made that happen. With that being said, the first thing I'd like to discuss and have discussion among the board members is the size of the board. Currently, we were notified, maybe a month or so ago, that, or maybe more, that Mr. Thomas Harden, a member of the board, had resigned because he was moving out of the area and has moved to Raleigh. So that was, that put us at ten members. Since that time, the, in November, Mr. Willie Newkirk's term expired, and at the end of December, former Alderman Barbara Lee's term expired. Last week, we received notice that Chairman of the Board, Joe Anderson, had also resigned. So there are four open spots. Prior to that, I will let you know that I had contacted at least six community leaders in this county, six of them, and none of them were interested in taking the seat or being appointed to it. Their concerns about the housing authority, their concerns about Trent Court, their concerns about the board itself, and I couldn't find any takers. So right now, I'd like to open up the discussion, but at this point, I feel like maybe seven is the magic number since that's where we're at. But again, opening the discussion for anybody else.
Mayor, I understand everything that's being said. I feel like we should look at option two and three of dissolving and either putting under the city of New Bern or putting with the Redevelopment Commission. And if we poll the board and we are looking towards that, I don't think we need to have a discussion on how many people sit on the housing authority.
I think at this point, through everything that we've been through in dealing with the
hurricane and moving forward, I feel like we need to get a fresh start and get everybody situated and back on track to living in affordable housing and making sure everything is going the way that it needs to be. And then maybe in the future, we can do, you know, do the housing authority again. But right now, I feel like it needs to either be under the city or be put under the Redevelopment Commission.
Any other? Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak with the housing authority attorney to ask him some questions.
Mr. Norman, would you go ahead and come up to the microphone? He'd like to ask you some questions.
Along with Mr. Blaney.
Mayor, while Mr. Blaney's making his way up, could I get some clarification of the list I show of current members? There's ten listed. Who are we missing off of this list?
Lisa Hardy, she is the, she is the resident.
She's a resident.
She's appointed by the residents and not by the mayor.
Thank you.
The operation of the housing authority, is that not by the federal government?
We're governed by rules established by the Department of Housing and Urban Development plus the property we own is secured by a declaration of trust and an annual contributions contract. It essentially says that we have to follow their rules.
So have y'all not been following those rules?
Yes, we have.
So I'm trying to figure out here what's going on and what's the problem here, why that the city is interested in taking the housing authority over when you are being in compliance? That's what I'm trying, if you're not in compliance.
Well, Alderman, obviously, that's a policy decision for the Board of Alderman to decide. The housing authority is an independent legal entity that has legal obligations to housing and urban development as well as through their annual contributions contract. And of course, the real estate is held with the deed of trust by Housing and Urban Development. They have other legal obligations through the Craven Terrace redevelopment and of course, grants that they've received from HUD related to the choice neighborhoods. And so those are sort of the legal obligations that are in place and functioning properly at this point. What, anything else we can add to help shed some light on that side of it?
It's a lot of moving parts here that I'm trying to digest and understand that I'm hearing on one side, but I don't have any information before me to show me where people has been misplaced. I understand about the storm, but this is my first time hearing, meeting about this situation is today. So I don't have any information to really carry me anywhere, but I just want to know why, what has, have y'all done wrong for the city to take you over? I mean, I'm lost there.
Again, I think that that's obviously a decision for the Board of Alderman to make. From the legal perspective, what I'll point out is that we have an annual plan, we have agreements with HUD, and we have grant agreements with HUD, and we've certainly begun the implementation process of the choice neighborhoods and the redevelopment of Craven Terrace, redevelopment of Trent Court and other alternatives. It really is, that's the policy setting mode of the Board of Commissioners for the housing authority. How those communicate and how those interact really is a matter of policy, and it may be something that the Board of Alderman and the Board of Commissioners need to discuss in a more collaborative way, but I'll let the executive director speak.
But have those obligations been met?
We have met all of our obligations to all of our partners, to the federal government, I believe to the city of New Bern. We've done what we're supposed to do. We're on the jumping off place of actually doing some redevelopment and new activity to take care of the residents of not only Trent Court, but also provide affordable housing within the city regardless of the obstacles that we have been and the challenges we have been confronted with. Now, we're doing what we're supposed to do, and we really don't know what else to do. And perhaps there's some other motivation for things that are going on.
When you're saying you really don't know what to do, what else to do, what are you referring to?
We wouldn't know what else to do, ma'am. We believe we are fulfilling our obligations of providing safe, clean, decent, affordable housing for residents of New Bern. We want to expand that commitment beyond Trent Court in a manner consistent with the CNI transformation plan. That is also part of the city's renewal endeavor. It was signed off, I believe, by the mayor. We're doing what we're supposed to do. We don't, we do things in a reasoned, measured manner to, trying to secure agreement before we actually implement. We, I found that that's the best way to do things. We've done that, we're actually trying to implement now, and this happens.
So what are you, go ahead. Well, why are you saying that's a decision that the Board of Alderman can make? If you are under Housing and Urban Development, you're doing everything that you're supposed to do, you've done everything that you're supposed to do, so then why would you say that it's up to the decision of this board to carry you under the city of New Bern or whatever decision we make?
Well, Alderman, under the North Carolina general statutes, you certainly have the authority to direct the housing authority's future. You can, I think, Alderman Bingle and the mayor have sort of laid out your statutory options. We can go through those in more detail if you want to. The housing authority was formed about eighty years ago through cooperation of civic-minded individuals in the city of New Bern. The mayor appoints the members of the Board of Commissioners under the statutes. So they are in a symbiotic relationship politically and policy-wise. Legally, they're completely separate entities. And that's where, as long as they're operating separately and they have their own missions, it works fine. But at the policy level, there is a lot of overlap, and I think that's why we say that.
All right, thank you for explaining.
So what is saying that you're not doing that I don't know that you can explain to me? Because I don't really know, so that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of.
Please, can I comment? So please don't take this the wrong way. There's a difference in operating how you need to be and in operating in integrity. I've been to a lot of meetings, and I know a lot of constituents that are living in these homes and they're not up to code. I know situations where people have been up to par, they have been transferred over to another housing authority, and then that same place that was flooded was re-rented to another constituent. I know individuals that are living in the housing authority.
That is not true, ma'am. That is not true.
Yes, it is. And I know of constituents that are paying almost eight hundred dollars to live in the housing authority when you can advise them to go and get a one-bedroom apartment or go live in a different situation than taking eight hundred dollars from them. That's not affordable living. And there's been countless meetings on things that have been going on with the housing authority on how they're operating.
I think, I think before there's emails coming, I just want to say this. I think part of why we're here today is better communication. Now, I think the city of New Bern, with the exception of not having an elevator, and this is the year of the elevator in the Alderman.
It absolutely is.
And you know, I've made this comment at the last housing authority meeting, and I've made it four or five years ago, that if you want to know anything about the Board of Adjustments, the zoning board, the city of New Bern Board of Alderman, the county commissioners, it's easy to either watch it on TV or pull it up, archive on the website. Now, Alderman Bingle, what's the last meeting that was on the website of the housing authority? Do you recall?
I think we discussed with Mr. Blaney the other day.
It was July of 2018 or something?
Maybe, but it's not been updated right.
The most recent website, or excuse me, agenda and minutes were from, well, we haven't had the summary yet, so minutes from November as well as the agenda for December, and they were posted in a very timely fashion.
So I want us all to have nice, professional, respectful communication here, but part of the concern, I think, I see in Alderman Kinsey's question, is I don't think this meeting is necessarily today about what you've done wrong. I think that the discussion today is that a lot on the Board of Alderman have looked at other housing authorities throughout the United States after we see the concerns of the hurricane and after the finish, the Craven Terrace was completed. And we're excited about other opportunities. This Board of Alderman made a decision several years ago that for the city of New Bern to grow, that the sewer lines were, did not necessarily need to stop at the city, at the city lines, wherever our city limits were. We felt that in order to attract more investment in our city, which brought more box stores and things to our city, that if we opened our sewer gates, that maybe businesses would come. I'm saying that to say that many housing authorities, I keep hearing this, New Bern, I don't have a problem that the housing authority of the city of New Bern, if it happened two blocks out of the city limits or if it happened a mile out of the city limits, we're trying to find affordable housing for New Bern proper. We're trying to partner with investors that will come to the city and see a room full of folks that want to work together and not be apart. So I think, again, part of what we're trying to do today is establish a better line of communication with the housing authority board. I don't think anybody in here walked in today with a quorum of folks on this board that want to abolish the housing authority. We do want to see if we can work together to bring more investment and nine percent tax credits to our city. We want to know that if you have a resident comes in and you don't have a unit, that you, if you are affordable housing in the city of New Bern and you care about your residents, that you know a private investor with a property management firm that you can send that resident to to find a home. We want you to have reciprocity with other affordable housing investors in the city and partner with the city of New Bern, with Craven County, with Twin Rivers. I know you do already, but we just want to work smartly and at more affordable housing for our residents.
Mayor, excuse me, Alderman Kinsey, and this may help you as well. You know, my main objective here today as the representative, the Alderman that represents the Trent Court area is the citizens. I'm not here because of the housing authority. I'm here discussing this because of the residents and the citizens of my ward. There are concerns, they have concerns. I've been concerned about the customer service that they are receiving at the housing authority. I have had some concern about the processes that have taken place since the storm and since Florence hit, and I have concerns. That doesn't mean that I want to dissolve the housing authority, but I have concerns. I have done my homework, I have done the research, I'm happy to share with anybody. I asked for a list of the rents paid at Trent Court, and there are, the good percentage of people, sixty percent pay under four hundred dollars a month, with the majority of them paying fifty and a hundred dollars a month. So that should tell you the state of housing in our community. But seventeen percent of those residents pay more than four hundred dollars, with one resident paying eight hundred and five dollars per month to live at Trent Court.
So where's the program to?
That's concerning, that's concerning to me. Because, and I understand Mr. Blaney's going to tell me, we can't make the move, we can't ask them to get out, but you can certainly put some policies in place or review that. The second issue I have is that we have a brand-new facility coming online, nine percent tax credit on Gaston Boulevard, eighty units. My question to Mr. Blaney was, how many of the residents still in place at Trent Court, a hundred and ten units, are seniors? His response, thirty percent. Great, that means thirty units. How many have you counselled that there are new opportunities on Gaston Boulevard and they would be able to move to a brand-new facility that would help them? His response was, nothing. We don't talk about other properties. That's concerning to me. That, and so again, this is not about dissolving it, it's about better communication with the residents, it's about better communication with the city and the Board of Alderman. I have been on the phone to other housing authorities, I've talked to them, and their directors are meeting with city managers and city boards weekly, if not monthly, doing other things, training of their boards, more engagement, more involvement. The end result is better housing. To Alderman Harris's issue, the X building, the X building was flooded. To what extent it was flooded? Because the residents in those apartments received FEMA money, okay? And I have spoken to the majority of people in the X building. They received anywhere from six hundred to eight hundred dollars in FEMA funds because their possessions were damaged by flood. So to me, that says your unit was flooded. But the housing authority, I went back and forth with Mr. Blaney, first of all, to even acknowledge the fact that there was water in the building. FEMA acknowledged it, but the housing authority didn't. We finally got to that resolution. But we have some people that are sick in these units. Their doctors are saying they're still mauled. I assume you sent your maintenance team in there, whoever, to clean them up, and what she's referring to is a young lady that lived in there was sick. We were able, I got on the phone and called Greenville Housing Authority, I did, and called Greenville Housing Authority, was able to transfer her over there so she could have better accommodations. She wasn't gone a week, less than a week, and her unit was rented. But I know there's some damages in there. If it was cleaned up, that's fine, but the problem is, these are, you know, in some cases, sixty, seventy, eighty-year-old units that, you know, leaky pipes behind the wall. There are issues, not to the fault of the housing authority, but there are issues. And this is an opportunity for us to try to correct the issues in a big manner, not in just wiping down the walls. So that is what Alderman Harris is concerned about or she was referring to. But I'm the one that gets the calls from the residents seeking help and assistance. And the reason they're not calling you, they're concerned that they're going to be kicked out. It's the truth straight out. They don't feel there is somebody at the housing authority that they can speak to without retribution. And whether that's perceived or whatever, it's still the issue that the residents are having. I have concerns. I've attended, I'm a regular attendee at the board meetings, I attend all the meetings that I can, and I see concern after concern after concern. And either it's, we need more training for your board, we need more training for you, but we have got to do a better job working with the residents. Because either they don't have the information, or they're not getting the information, or we need a liaison. I have asked for months now to have a liaison between the residents and the housing authority, and keep telling, no, we got it. So I couldn't even get to that step. So that's my concerns in being here today. I want to find out what our options are. I'm not asking to dissolve the housing authority today. All I want to know is what our options, how do we work better? How do we take our residents and treat them in a manner? And again, these are people who have, you know, lost everything. And now they're on the voucher system, and I guess that's good news because they potentially can find a place. The bad news is, I went to the meeting yesterday, which I see Ms. Dixon in the audience, thank you for being here with Twin Rivers. I'd like to have seen a little more customer service there because these people are being told, one, you've got to have a security deposit. They're concerned about that. Now you've got to pay utilities. Everybody's in a mess, so we've got some big issues in front of us that need some healing and helping. So either the housing authority has to step in or the city has to step in. Thank you, Mayor.
All my best.
After the hurricane, of course, you had the damage to the units and you had residents displaced. Now, they receive, you receive vouchers from, through HUD. Now, are you, the housing authority or, you know, management, under any legal obligation to help assist these residents in finding housing because of the voucher system?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Sir, the attorney was asking, is you're not under any legal obligation to assist these residents in trying to find housing for these displaced residents?
Legally, that's a very broad question, I think. HUD certainly encourages affordable housing, and the housing authority's contract with HUD is to focus on housing authority property. They're responsible for managing that property, making sure that those residents are, and that they have as close to a hundred percent occupancy as they can. Beyond that, I think it's really a matter of policy and collaboration throughout the community. I know that affordable housing, as the mayor pointed out, is not just a housing authority issue, it's a regional issue. But the housing authority is required to focus on its own property legally. Beyond that, there's certainly nothing stopping legally. There's no legal obstacle to cooperation. So.
So then legally, so then legally, under general statute, it's up to this board to help assist our citizens to find housing?
Affordable housing.
Everybody, he said. All right, thank you.
Alderman Kinsey.
Mr. Anderson, could you step up to the podium, please?
Sure.
I'd like for you guys to remain here. From some of the things that Alderman Bingle was saying during the storm, after the storm was over, were you guys able to come together to make any type of decision based on what the needs would be shortly after that?
Yeah, let me just answer by giving you.
Yeah, let me just answer by giving you a bit of a bigger picture. In terms of the board composition, my recommendation would be get quality people, no matter what size the board, it's not a quantity issue, it's a quality issue. Because of the storm, the responsibilities of the board members obviously increased. In terms of the operational efficiency of the housing authority, they are doing what they need to do operationally. They passed their audits, they're in compliance. However, in terms of stakeholder management, I would give us a less than passing grade. Not that anyone is trying to be deceitful or not provide information or customer service. It's, part of it is a matter of strong fatigue, people being overwhelmed by what happened during the storm, and the combination of the infrastructure being very old. My recommendation would be to knock it all down, move people into better housing, rather than putting Band-Aids on the current Trent Court facility. In terms of some of the things you've heard here today, I'm also concerned that we're, I won't say we're asking the wrong questions, but this is more what rather than why. What can we do to fix it? What can we do to improve things? What can we do to move forward? There's pros and cons on both sides. If you take over the housing authority, you're going to inherit all of the bureaucracy that you're going to have to deal with with HUD. One of the things I learned as chair of the housing authority was that, simple things that I would just want to do, you know, you've got to go out to bid for this, you've got to do it this way for that, whereas a simple management decision would be, here's the problem, just address it, just take care of it. So I think if you take it over, you're going to run into all of those bureaucratic challenges dealing directly with HUD. I do believe in looking at best practices from other housing authorities, and if you found some things that this housing authority is falling short at, we should adopt those practices quickly. I could go on, but I'm going to stop there. I don't know if I've answered your question or not.
Thank you. So back to the, back to the housing authority attorney. So you were saying that it's no obligation to you guys when a storm come in, that you have to do this and do that for the person. What about when the people go in to make a complaint that Alderman Bingle was saying that no one has been taken care of? Is that true there, that these people have been ignored? I don't know, I'm asking.
Let me respond to that. Thank you for the question. A lot of this is perception, and I'm going to give you my perception for what it's worth. If you have a housing authority where ninety-five percent or more of the residents are not complaining, to me, that's passing muster just in terms of ratios. However, if you have one, two, three, four percent that are complaining, and those complaints have a valid reason for the complaint, you should fix them. Customer service demands that. I think the housing authority tried to do the best they can. Again, you're dealing with old infrastructure. I've seen some problems be fixed multiple times, you know, drains that back up. The crew comes, they clean out the drain, they fix it. Three days later, another drainage back up. So of course, that resident complains. The things you're talking about in the X building, we had our mitigation company go in there, they could find no moisture, they measured for moisture. So even though those people got money from FEMA, we were paying a mitigation company to tell us, is there still a problem? They did not find one. Now, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just giving you a little example of the back and forth that goes on when you're trying to address customer concerns. Let me just say one more thing, and I'll sit down. If you take over the housing authority, and that's a viable idea, you're going to inherit, nothing's going to change by stroke of the pen, now we own it, then you own the problem as well. Maybe that's better, because then you're going to get more direct involvement in these issues, and you're going to have to run into ground and figure out, you know, what you want to do. Some of them can be addressed by focus, better training of the staff, more support for the staff, maybe even adding a resource or two. I do think you need a liaison between the housing authority and the city to track some of this down, to go out and find some of these best practices and bring them back and implement them. Because right now, the housing authority is on an island by itself, trying to do the best it can with its limited resources. I think they can do better, especially in stakeholder management and communications, but I think the inherent problems are primarily because the infrastructure is old. That is the source of the problems.
Mr. Blaney, based on what we have heard so far, what the problems are now, from what Alderman Bingle and Harris was making a statement on, that the poor housing and the living conditions, where are you now from what you just heard early, now, now we're hearing something different now? What are you looking to do about those things now that we heard that we have an idea of a problem, what's going on and what needs to be fixed? How are you looking to take care of that?
I would suggest that some of these issues may be best discussed in a forum that would allow for more cooperation and collaboration, perhaps the assignment of an ad hoc committee composed of a couple aldermen, maybe a couple board members, with staff, Mr. Stevenson, myself. I think that may be the most reasonable, most productive way to discuss this and resolve some of these issues.
Okay, because from where I'm sitting at, I'm only one vote, that I don't believe in taking a wrecked car, trying to spend all my money trying to fix it. You know, that's what you guys do. And I think that you can do it better, along with collaboration, partnership, and making this thing work, that, you know, where everybody can be happy. You know, it's not throwing stones or putting on the gloves wants to fight. You know, it's trying to make this thing work for everybody, where everybody can be happy and everybody can live happily after, again and again. So that's my take. And thank you so very much.
Thank you.
We want to hear from the attorney. It's up to the board. Do you want us, do you want the attorney to give us what the options are? Does anybody have any other questions?
Sure. Yeah, again, I think, and again, I'm not speaking for the Board of Aldermen, but this is a fact-finding meeting today. It's a better communication meeting today. It's making the housing authority aware of concerns we have. We have a shovel-ready Third Avenue piece of property that could put another eighty-unit project on. I know you, I know the housing authority has looked at several sites, but again, I'm just trying to figure out how, where we have, we've been twice to DC, and people are reaching out to us to help, but when the housing authority has one modus operandi and the city of New Bern has another, we've got to work together to bring those funds to New Bern, to expedite more affordable housing units. I don't want to see anybody living in those units that the aldermen are describing. I don't think anybody in this room wants to see anybody living in them. So how are we going to expedite affordable housing, new units in our city, so that folks don't have to live in those conditions? If somebody's got that answer, I'm looking for it. If you don't, let's communicate better, let's open our meetings up to the public to where the public can be more involved in the process and understand. This is probably the first time that many of the residents of New Bern know anything about how the housing authority operates, or how it doesn't, because there is no communication.
I just wanted to let all the aldermen know that at your place, I put an article that's titled, "What Everyone Gets Wrong About Affordable Housing." It was shared with me by one of the housing authority members, Rob Overman. I really appreciate the fact that he forwarded it to me, and I think you should read it and look at it, and it talks about, it talks about affordable housing and the myths and different things about, we use that word very loosely, affordable housing, but there's a lot of people that, who are in public housing that can't pay more than the fifty or a hundred dollars a month, and affordable housing just has a different connotation. So I would recommend that you all read it and at least get familiar with what it says.
Mr. Blaney, or any of your board members, or any of the public would like to make any comments and ask any questions on the New Bern Board of Aldermen, Barbara Lee, if you'd like to come forward and ask any questions. You'd be more than glad to do that.
I just wanted to say, you guys, I've been wanting to.
Good morning.
It's just rich as the nephew. I know that you have your reasons for wanting to deal with us. And as a member of the Board of Housing Authority, you know, and who has been a member of the Board of Aldermen for many years, I know why we formed an authority many years ago. What we do is allow the citizens of the community to participate in decision-making. And we're talking about the housing authority because we have a close sensitivity towards it, because we know the people who live there. I live there. So we want to make sure that what we do is the right thing. I know I went to the shelter many, many times during the storm. You must admit, this is something that has never happened, you know? So what we're all doing, even you, are feeling our way to how, to make a difference there. My concern, and those who know me, is for the people who live there. I saw some people who live there. I want to make sure that they are taken care of. And I think that's what our Board of Commissioners works and saying about. We want to make sure. I don't know why brought this fight with all the things that we have to go between you guys and us.
It's not a fight.
Well, I perceive it as, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm glad it's not a fight. Because, see, what you could do is come to the meeting and tell us this. Barbara Lee, y'all not doing the right thing. I'm not on the board anymore unless he reappoint me, and I'm not sure. But you could come to the meetings, or you could call a workshop with us, and we could talk about the kinds of things that you think we should be doing. And as a members of the board, and as a member of the community, we want to do the right thing for the people we serve. That's the only thing that matters to me. It's not a power thing or something that I just want to be in charge of, it's not a witch hunt or anything like that. But what I wanted to do is make sure that what we can do is sit down and talk about it. We have lots of knowledge about housing authorities. Many of us on that board have been involved in housing authorities in New Bern and with the federal government over the years. So we have some expertise. It's not like we are just sitting there pretending like nothing is happening. We've all been in the shelters, we've all been around knocking on the doors and talking to the citizens. None of them are telling me, y'all are saying things, folks are saying things, of course. They're in a crisis, you know? They're in a crisis, and they don't know what to do. So then, if they complain, if Barbara Lee, we didn't get this, if Barbara Lee, we didn't get that, and so what we do is look into it and see what we can do. And if you guys were working with us, and we'd be most willing to work with you, then we can wash up these things. I believe in best practice, as Ms. Anderson said. So if you know of a best practice of housing authority, then let's sit down and talk about that, so we can emulate it and do the kinds of things we need to do. Because we are getting ready to go into another apartment situation, and we want to do it right. We want to do it right. If they have to summon us, we don't mind doing it right, we want to do the right thing, okay? So if you guys want to, actually want to sit down and talk with us about how to make a difference, and I'm speaking as a citizen, just as a citizen, someone who cares about what happens to people in Trent Court, I'm going to be out there. Whether I'm on that board or not, I'm going to be out there, believe me. Okay? So that's something that all of us need to do. We know we got a housing shortage around here, we got vouchers, we waving them.
Yeah.
We waving them. Thank you for the vouchers. We're waving them, for people who need it can come and get them.
Alderman Lee, part of, part of our concern, and you might want to stay and respond to this, is that this is a public forum here. It's got cameras on, it'll be archived, and part of my frustration with the housing authority is if we did go to the housing authority, the meetings are not taped, they're not aired, they're not public. There are public minutes, there are notes that are made, and at the next meeting, they are approved by a board. So, and then, five or six months later, they are put on your website. We're just trying to open the doors to public awareness. Part of government, I think Tip O'Neill said, is, it starts at the grassroots. And the concerns, trust me, at grassroots level are there, and I don't know how, what percentage, but I can tell you, a large percentage of the complaints about affordable housing conditions in the city of New Bern are right here, they're getting, these are the aldermen getting the complaints. Now, what level, what level the authority members are getting, I don't know, because I can tell you that on a daily basis, we are getting complaints. And then, and then we do not want to in any way run the housing authority, but we have to have some means of constructive dialogue, communication, and resolve as to this situation. And that's what the meeting is about. If there was any kind of a misconception that this meeting is to formally abolish the housing authority board, I don't think you're going to see that today. I think you're going to see the concerns, frustrations of this Board of Aldermen, as to the communication level, as to the turnaround methodology of bringing new units to New Bern, about the lack of reciprocal reciprocity amongst the housing authority and other affordable housing opportunities in the city, and a lack of just public awareness because of the way the housing authority conducts its meetings. That's, that's part of this discussion.
This could be taken care of very easily. We welcome you, and we welcome the cameras, and we welcome whoever we need to welcome to make sure that you know that we are not trying to do things that.
I understand, that's why we wanted to bring it out in the public today, but Barbara, I want to make sure, we had no less than maybe four or five meetings with Mr. Anderson, with Mr. Blaney, myself, Alderman Odom, Alderman Harris, Alderman Astor, the mayor. So for the last, since the storm hit, we have had numerous meetings to bring these concerns, whether they are translated to the board, I can't, I can't say that, but we have had numerous meetings, and bringing these concerns to them from the minute the storm hit and beyond.
Well, thank you for your interest. So I welcome you to come back again, now that you've had this meeting and you've told us, and so many of us here, your board members, stand up, please, so they can know that we're here, we're in the house. We hear you, and we understand your concern, but our major interest is those people, and many of them back there. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Barbara Lee, I appreciate that, and I want to just get something clear. My frustration was in regards to all of the conversations that I've had with Blaney. I'm not going to say that the rest of the board is not doing what you guys are supposed to be doing, and that you don't have the forefront of the citizens on your mind, I can see that, and I believe that. My concern is that when Alderman Bingle or the mayor go to a meeting, and she comes back and briefs me, because we all can't be at a meeting, and she discusses and talks to the director and says, there's no vision, there's no plan, there's nothing, and he's the voice of the housing authority, that's where I think, for me, the issue lies. Now, when, when it was presented that there should be a liaison between the housing authority and the city, I think that's a great idea, but it was turned down. I feel like I would be comfortable moving forward if we did have someone elected as a liaison, so that things can be rectified, and then, like you said, or Blaney said, that there is an ad hoc meeting where there's a few aldermen and the board members, because at the end of the day, the only people that matter are the citizens that live there. And I feel like, you know, and I feel like we all care about that, and that's really important, and, you know, I just want to make sure that that's where my frustration lies. I'm not coming here to take over the housing authority, or, but that, based on the three options and where I was in the beginning, before hearing some of this stuff, yes, because I'm frustrated because of hearing, and some of my friends and stuff that live there that are struggling, and their day-to-day situation on customer service, or how they're being responded to, how they're getting denied for vouchers, even though they on customer service or how they be respond to, how they're getting denied for vouchers even though they were flooded in the hurricane. That's frustrating. And so that was my first view. Moving forward, yes, I would love for there to be an open line of communication and a liaison from the Housing Authority to the city of New Bern because you guys are going to be building a new, new Housing Authority over in Pembroke. And so I want that communication to be open. So that's, that's what I had to say.
Prior to council, Alderman Astor, do you have something to say?
Yeah, my only concern is, well, it's not my only concern, but my big concern is, is that when we receive telephone calls or asked to have meetings with the residents and the residents issue complaints, and we tell them, have you discussed this with management? And they say they're too scared to because they're concerned that they will be kicked out and they don't have anywhere to go. Yeah, I do know, I agree they shouldn't have that concern. But I do know there's been on, well, a prime example was right after the hurricane. We were, gosh, it must have been 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
We had been called over there to meet with some residents. We were standing out meeting with residents and they didn't know what to do next. You know, they didn't know where to go, what to do. So our recommendation to them at that time to management was that you call for a meeting of all the residents in the parking lot if you have to, because everything, all the buildings were damaged. Call them in the parking lot, get them together and say, this is what we need to do. This is the direction that we need to go. This is, they were just looking. You could have had some experts there to help them out, you know, from FEMA or Housing Authority or whatever. But they were looking for direction. And as far as I know, to this day, that meeting never took place. And that was suggested two or three times. You know, so, so I'm not sure, you know, I think the communication, there's a lack of communications between the Housing Authority and the city of New Bern. But I also feel there's a major lack of communication between the Housing Authority and the citizens that live there.
Yes, sir. If you would state your name and address and everything for record.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. My name is Sharad Banks. I'm a principal in the Banks Law Firm. I live in Durham. My firm serves housing authorities throughout North Carolina, Virginia, South Carolina, and some other places. And so I thought, in listening to the discussion this morning, that I would come and share some things with you that are not necessarily legal. But because my firm and I have represented so many authorities and because I have seen housing authorities and municipalities have these discussions in the past, I want to say first that I think it's a very good idea and thank you for airing some of these issues publicly. Because I think the, the real issues that, that the parties are dealing with are certainly much more able to be dealt with than some of the rumors about what the meeting would be about. So I think that's a very healthy thing. A couple of comments regarding board size. We probably represent 11 housing authorities in North Carolina. The only board that is 11 is New Bern, I believe. Okay? And, you know, that's not to say that 11 can't be a good number. I mean, obviously, the statute allows for it. And under certain circumstances, 11 might be a good number. But it certainly is a difficult number that most of my clients have found to manage. I think a comment was made earlier by the chair that it's really about the quality of the appointments as opposed to the number. And I think that's absolutely true. I think that you will find that most housing authorities, CEOs, and other board members want their, their Board of Alderman or town councils or what have you, or mayors to look really hard to find representatives from the development community, the finance community. Those types of individuals are hard to find. And obviously, you have to have resident representation on the board. But it's really about the skill set that's brought to the board that helps keep a housing authority moving in the right direction along with a competent staff. So we've represented housing authorities that have had as few as five board members. I firmly believe five is too small because as soon as you lose someone, now you have a hard time making a quorum, you can't take an action. We certainly represent many housing authorities that have seven. It's a very functional number. We represent housing authorities that have nine. That's a functional number. But that's my experience with the board size, for whatever it's worth. Most housing authorities in time have dysfunctioned with the bodies that appoint them. It, it happens from time to time, for whatever reason. I will tell you that the Durham Housing Authority several years ago had a joint retreat. Its entire Housing Authority Board and the city council had a joint retreat about affordable housing issues. So the quarters were together, the Housing Authority staff was at the retreat, the city staff, the planning department, the housing department, they were all at the retreat. They negotiated the agenda ahead of time. It was well planned. And I attended that meeting and the Housing Authority and the city learned an awful lot about each other. They traded a lot of ideas. They learned a lot. And I will tell you that it became the springboard for the Housing Authority of the city of Durham and the city of Durham to do joint planning for at least four or five major rehabilitations of properties that are in and around the city core. I believe that the launching path for that was that joint retreat. They did it twice and they have been running hand in glove ever since. In addition to that, Durham Housing Authority has the position of liaison. There's a city council person that is a liaison sitting on the Housing Authority Board. They've had that since 1995 when I began representing them and sitting at all their board meetings. And so there's a concrete relationship there. There's very little loss of information between those two authorities. Charlotte Housing Authority, we also represent. A couple of years ago, maybe three or four years ago, when the Charlotte Housing Authority has this board retreat, these, the, the folks who run the Charlotte Housing Department comes and joins in that retreat. They have presentations that they do jointly. They learn from each other. I would suggest, for whatever it's worth, that you think about something like that to restart this relationship in a concrete way where you have an opportunity to find out all about what this housing authority is doing and what it is not doing. So that you can learn from one another. And I, and I firmly believe it would be extremely productive, extremely productive. So I would say that about communication. And then finally, I would say that I know, now, when I put my legal hat back on, I've been hired here by the Housing Authority to help with the Trent Court Transformation Plan. And as you know, I think that plan was finalized in 2016. I think great participation by the city and other stakeholders. It's a long term plan. I think it rolls out 15 to 20 years. I understand that affordable housing is more emergent, is more urgent than that, but that's a long term plan. And that's sort of my job to help roll that plan out. What I'm getting at is that we have to carefully plan the acquisition of properties for the construction of new housing. We have to carefully plan the rehabilitation of existing properties for the preservation of affordable housing. We have to do all of those things at once. And they all take extreme amounts of planning and resources, 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 like tax credit financing, which you can only even apply for once a year. But the Housing Authority and even putting into fruition the transformation plan, it absolutely positively needs the support and understanding and partnership with the city. And it cannot happen unless both parties are at the same table, understanding what each party brings to that table and what each party can do for the citizens. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Any other citizens want to come up and make any comments? Alderman Taylor, you win.
Yes, my name is former Alderman Victor Taylor, 28, 17, water dry, New Bern, North Carolina. Thank you, board, for allowing me to speak. I won't be long. I sat out there, I sat up there, and now I'm back out here. I also lived in Trent Court, H70, Trent Court. You can almost roll a rock to the water. Back in the sadness, it flooded a lot then as well. This was one of the storms that was unheard of, 13 feet serious water. And I know we're talking about the board, commission board, and I want to give you my feed on the commission board. I was on the board when they moved from seven to nine to 11. And each one of the board members had a nomination. And I nominated a very, very skilled, educated individual. That individual was denied because of personal reasons. Mr. Anderson and the attorney that just walked away said it's my fault. The person that's appointed, the ones that's on the board now, very much well spoken, very educated people. But Alderman Bingo said there's four spaces empty, missing. They stepped off, they went other places for other reasons. But when the mayor and the Board of Alderman choose to replace those four individuals, make sure they are skilled, qualified, and it's not a personal game. Personal game will get you nowhere. That's what happened the last time it was appointed. Personal game. You see what happened? After that personal game, the commission board went downhill. Ms. Ethel Bell Sampson was on that board at that time. It was moved around, she was moved around. Okay? So when you all make the decision, whether it be seven, nine, or 11, please make sure it's qualified individual, skill set individual, and has a heart for all people. Not just certain people. And make sure it's not monetary and make sure it's not personal gain. Because that's when you get, you're going wrong. So that's my two cent from Victor Taylor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and both Aldermen for allowing the citizens to
Barbara Lee, you state your name and address for the record.
Robert Johnson, pastor of Ebenezer Presbyterian Church. I just want to again say thank you for allowing the citizens to attend this public meeting so that we may hear from the horse mouth the truth about some of the problems, issues that we have been hearing about concerning the Housing Authority. I'm just pleased to note, just listen to you, that the key to a lot of the rumors and things that we have heard came about because of lack of communication. And I'm encouraged that you foresee that we need to build open line of communication between all the boards that you appoint and represent the city so we can continue to grow and to expand and make life better for all of us here in the city. So I just feel that this is a healing meeting. It's an opportunity for us to come together and reason about what's really concerning us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mark Bass. I'm at 878 Highway 55, West New Bern. Formerly, I used to be on the Planning and Zoning Board. Worked extensively with the Housing Authority through my years at the college, HUD Housing and all that. Most folks know me, know me, I'm an advocate for the people. And I think that's one thing that's, that's missing. When you hear complaints, probably in 2007, 2008, and Ms. Barbara Lee says something specifically, there was something unusual that happened here in New Bern. Had us had a huge layoff, about 800 people who, who working for years had a situation that never happened to them before. I was working at the college that time. And one of the things that we looked at, you know, we, college education, so they say like, can we do classes? Can we get enrolled in classes? And from my experience, I said, let's see, can we meet the needs of the people first? And so we had a joint entity with the company and all the folks that were effective to see what some of their needs are. Some of the folks had emotional needs. This was just like a death to them. They've been working for years in a stable situation. So they needed to deal with some personal issues. Some folks need to be educated about what resources was out there that they could tap into and be trained on how to use those resources. What I'm saying is this, this was an unusual entity. And people are going to complain because something happened that never happened before. And the Housing Authority Board had to deal with issues they didn't have to deal with before. But in the midst, what are you doing to meet the needs of the folks who are going through the same thing or something that they have not had to deal with before? One of the things that we did, we, we stepped out, we asked them what were their needs and concerns. Because there was paperwork that they had to do for the first time. They had to apply for unemployment. They had to apply for a program that they never heard of before that was for displaced workers. So we brought all those resources to the individuals and provided them with all that information so they had a better. And some of them, them never used computers. We did computer classes so they could do electronically. So my concern is meeting the needs of the individuals who are, who are displaced, who've never been displaced before. And even I was on a committee years ago that they talked about vouchers. But they also were saying that with landlords who would no longer accept them vouchers because they had tenants who didn't know how to keep their properties up. Recommended a class, I recommended a class because on teaching them how to be better tenants, get a certificate and they could present to landlords who now knows that, you know what, they've been to a class, so they may be a good tenant, to be an advocate so they would be more receptive to accepting those vouchers. So that's something that we put in place. And a lot of those folks felt a lot better after their needs were met in a timely manner. They got information that they never had before. They was told about resources. I mean, when you see folks that came here FEMA, they had filling out forms. Folks didn't know what to do with those forms. Most of them didn't know what to do with those forms. That was their first time dealing with them. They didn't know about other resources out there they could tap into. Was there insurance available? Could they go to the health department? What services are with the Department of Social Services? I'm on the DSS Board. And I didn't see anyone except for when they was doing all the processing information to come to some of the board meetings, state some of the needs for maybe individuals that they could help with. So I'm just asking on behalf of those individuals that are affected, consider that in your process as you move forward. Because those folks, they are still folks who are shell shocked and no one has met their need yet. They're going through emotional trauma of not having any place to stay and no one has met that need yet. So I just want you to consider that. I know this, this, this kind of threw a wrench in a different angle, but I think that should be considered as you go through this process of doing. And I think with the Choice Neighborhood Initiative, I think it was recommended that a resource center be placed in both areas or one or the other, so folks can have a resource center to go to and ask those questions. So I, I don't know where that was dropped, but it was recommended. So I just want you to consider that as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, yes, Ben.
Good morning to everyone. Yes, my name is Barbara Sampson. I'm just a regular layperson. And I was just trying to speak on behalf of Trent Court residents. I'm not their representative in any way, but I have empathy for them, not just sympathy. I have empathy. I feel for them. I talk to them and ask them different questions about have they gave you guys a list yet of any places available to you all, which you can afford? And they told me no. And I went to the girl house in Trent Court where they pulled up the floors downstairs. And she had all her other furniture upstairs in both rooms. And that was a sad situation for me. She told me, said, Barbara, when I give her to move, I'm going to wipe the furniture down. But the furniture was already moved and everything. But I want them But I want them to have some hope. They really don't understand all the legal jargon that we are telling them. So that's why I come to these meetings, so that I can get a gist of what's going on, so I can go back to them and lay it down for them where they can understand what's going on. And I know we say we have some apartments over on Gaskin Avenue Boulevard, I understand that. But as for a certain age group, I'm not sure, some say it's fifty, some say fifty-five, but whatever, it's a certain age group. But a group that don't reach that age, whether we have for them to go. Anytime you need a new board member on the Housing Authority Board, my mother's still a good candidate, Ethel Sampson.
Ask some questions about the city.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
With the housing authority set up the way it is in the statute, is there any way that the Board of Aldermen could put any requirements on it such as the executive director would report directly to, or report to the Board of Aldermen in a monthly report or something so that we can hold it accountable? I think that is the issue in some cases, is the accountability other than just their board, their minutes, whatever. I'm just curious to that, I'm not saying...
The statute doesn't contemplate that, but it certainly sounds like through cooperation the parties could agree to that, and it sounds like it might work.
Thank you. That's my question.
Okay. Anybody else from the public that would like to come up?
My name's Bill Frederick from twenty-four oh eight Turtle Bay, or what's left of it. I've been on the board for six years. When I came on the board in two thousand twelve, you're absolutely right, the board meetings were held in a dining room in the Sheridan Hotel. Since my time on the board, every meeting has been open to the public. It's advertised and it's posted on the office building down on Walt Balamere, whatever the street is, Front Street. So the idea of televising it is fine, I don't think, I can't speak for the entire board, but I certainly can speak from those that I've talked to, that we have absolutely no problem with it being on television. It wasn't an option we even considered. So can we do that better? Sure, if that's something that'll help you. Secondly, Bobby, and you know this as well as I do, every one of you guys signed up to be the recipient of complaints. That's what council members, Aldermen do, that's your profession. So if I've got a complaint, I'm going to call Bobby. And that's just the way the organization works. If we can figure out, we were criticized soundly for doing the Craven Terrace project because we spent too much money. I don't believe we spent a penny of the city's money. We spent all kinds of money that we've got from every source we could find it to put Craven Terrace in place. In the process of doing that, we eliminated forty-four units. Forty-four of those units are committed to the Gaskin Avenue project. So we already have spent the forty-four units of low income housing, or affordable income housing, in Gaskin's Avenue. So that's not an option anymore. That's taken care of. We need to build some more units. We're proposing to do just that on Carolina Avenue, which is in Ms. Harrison's territory. That's in the beginning stages. Since two thousand twelve, I've been aware that there were a hundred and fourteen units in Craven Terrace that were at immediate risk for destruction by the next flood. In that period of time, the feds came back and said we are not spending any more money repairing projects that are in a flood zone. So it wasn't when, I mean, it wasn't if we were going to lose those Trent Court projects, it was when. Now, during that whole process, it was sudden, it was disastrous, and there were a lot of confusion, and can we improve that? Sure, that's something we can work on. But the last thing I have to offer is, as to the size of the board, remember that a camel is a horse designed by committee.
Hey, Bill, Bill, let me ask you a question, and I agree, when you sign up, you sign up to take complaints.
That's right.
I have no problem with that. But when I recommend that they move their complaints somewhere else, and they're scared to do that, that becomes another problem.
Well, I...
And I understand, I understand what you're going to say, you and I have had these conversations before. My question to you is, when you build this new project out on Carolina Avenue, how many people from Craven Terrace, or excuse me, from Trent Court will be able to move into that facility?
Well, at the original planning that where we are now, we had to acquire the property that the city owned, and we have an agreement with the city to lock that property up. Now we've got to put the infrastructure together to build a building. And we're limited to eighty-eight units, there's a...
Twenty-four, twenty-four units can, you can move twenty-four units, it's a percentage, thirty percent of the eighty. I think that's what we were told at the last meeting.
Well, yeah, but there's some other ways to look at that, Sabrina, that there is a possibility that that unit could become an entire replacement for eighty-eight units at Trent Court. That's, there is a methodology to do that. I'm not saying it's going to work, I'm not saying... When you're dealing with HUD, you're dealing with Medusa. There are thirty-five heads out there trying to get to you at one time, and you're trying to figure out which one you want to feed first. So in building the new unit, normally you're right, there is a percentage allocation when a private contractor puts up a building and he uses certain federal funds, there is a percentage he has to dedicate to affordable housing. And that puts the limits on things, and that provides for Section Eight voucher people, and it provides for subsidies such as the housing authority can do. But at the moment, this is a very long and drawn-out process. It took us five years to get Trent Court, we just put Trent Court, I'm sorry, Craven Terrace online last spring. And we started that in two thousand, summer of two thousand twelve. So Trent Court's going to take a lot longer because we have a disastrous situation now. Joe said it, the buildings at Trent Court were built the year I was born in forty-two, and I'm old. So those buildings are a whole lot older than I am. So they reached their useful physical life probably forty years ago. And we've been patching them and patching them and patching them, and now we've got patches on patches on patches, and when they fall apart, they fall apart big time.
Now, one of the things that you said that was concerning to me, and I just, again, want to make a public statement about it, is that you said it wasn't if they would flood, but when they would flood. So you've known for years that that situation was in front of you, correct?
Anybody who knew where the flood plain was, knew that that situation existed.
Well, what concerned me is there was no disaster plan. The housing authority had a zero, the first thing as soon as it hit, I said, what's the disaster plan? What do we do with the people? Where are we going? What are we doing? Nothing.
Mea culpa, mea culpa.
So that's what I'm saying. I mean, these are the things that are concerning to me because there was no plan to address the citizens, to move them. We knew this was eventually going to happen. And I urge you again as a housing authority, there's nothing to say it won't happen again next year. What is the plan? That's all. You know, this year, what is the plan? That's what I think is so important.
We don't have one, that I'm aware of.
Right, you do not.
And that's a fallacy that we have to correct. But again, this is a volunteer board, we have been through three directors now...
I'm a volunteer too, I feel like. I told Jamie today, I'm about ready to vote for the pay raise because I'm voting my...
As to your comment, Bobby, I find it appalling that people would feel, I've dealt with the staff down there for six years, and I, for the life of me, can't figure out if any of them would threaten anybody. They're just not built that way. I mean, I know for a personal fact that when the lady who handles the people we have to evict for lack of payment or for other problems that we have, such as being arrested for drugs or felonies and those kinds of things, she is personally humbled by what she has to do. I mean, this isn't something she gets any joy out of at all. And I've nicknamed her the sheriff, but she is doing a very good job, but it's a job that nobody wants to do. So when, again, in May of two thousand twelve, if memory serves me correctly, we had in excess of a hundred and twenty police reports in Trent Court. In May of two thousand fourteen, we had zero. That's the difference the board made in those two years. And today, I offer the Trent Court and/or Craven Terrace, which is no longer a part of any of us, Craven Terrace is a private organization now, but Trent Court is probably one of the safer areas in town. And the citizens can tell you that.
Sir, I just want to make a comment. I know numerous people that live in Trent Court, good law-abiding citizens. And I have talked to some of the residents that lived there, or that did live there, some of them that still live there. And a lot of those residents are happy where they're at. A lot of them have told me that they may pay four hundred dollars or more, but it's something where they can afford because their electricity is included in that bill.
Sure.
They can't go somewhere else, rent an apartment, pay the rent of four, five hundred dollars, plus a utility bill on top of that, plus other expenses. So, and then on the other hand, I got other residents that I talked with, and some of them are not happy. So we're going to have that unbalance there, that's just like...
Human nature.
Any place that you go for is rental property or whatever, you're going to have that unbalance there. But I do want to make, I do want to make this statement because I know we all talk to different individuals and different people have different stories. But I can say that, and I'm going to point her out, and she's going to probably get me, but I'm going to put her on the spot right here today. I know Ms. Tawana Smith, I have had so many residents come to me and tell me how nice and how overbearing that she would be to help them. And I haven't had any complaints when it comes to her and other members on the board that has been out there helping these, the residents. And the only thing I can say is, I maybe I've had two complaints. Again, we can always get complaints, but I just wanted to throw that in there, and hopefully we can all come together, this board with the Housing Authority, and come up with some plan of how we can work together and help improve the city, not just Trent Court, but the city and other areas of the city. We can all work together and help the citizens of our city, because the citizens of the city is our responsibility.
As to your comments about being home and wanting to stay in the Trent Court area, we have third and fourth generation families in that situation that have been there all their lives, their children were raised, their grandchildren were raised there. That's their neighborhood, that's their little universe. And as the gentleman from the community college was talking about, this is very, very destructive and life-shattering to them to have Mother Nature spread everybody out all over, where will we go? Your turn?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Monty's replacing me, thank you.
Alderman Kenzie, do you have a question? Alderman Kenzie.
For you, we don't have a plan either. While we're working on a plan, we'd like for you to be a partner with us.
That works just fine with me, because I never perceived the idea that we didn't have a plan, and I don't even know where to begin to get a plan.
We want you to be a partner with us.
All right, my name is Pete Monty, I'm on the board, fifteen ten Tryon Road in New Bern. I probably ought to have Lee, if she's still there. We'll be coming to you soon. If you don't have a copy of the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, cover looks like this, we need to get one, put it on your work desk, turn to page eighty-seven, looks like this, this is where we start. Now, Trent Court is on about page ninety-three. You're taking us down, right? Right, okay. At ninety-three, it starts with Trent Court. And here you see a map, what flooded. The first two buildings we want to build, according to this plan, will be on the east side, on the outside, they will be elevated and parking will be underneath. So you'll be hearing more about that as we progress, but please, get a copy of this, print it out, put it on your work desk, you're going to need it. And it's a plan, and it's a good plan, and it's a plan to all the residents. Everybody took a part in, the city took a part in. Mr. Mayor, you wrote an introduction to it, you remember that? Let me read some of your words. As a true community-led effort, our plan provides a detailed roadmap that is both achievable and sustainable. The centerpiece of the plan is the transformation of New Bern's public housing at Trent Court and Craven Terrace. Revitalizing these areas will improve the safety and the quality of life for many residents, provide the catalyst for positive change, and encourage additional private and public investment. Nice words, Mr. Mayor.
Nice.
Thank you. Pete, go online, Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, there it is.
choicenewbern.com, choicenewbern.com, you can go there and you can get all the information. Pete, thank you for sharing that with us. We are well aware of what the future holds, we're talking about the present. We're talking about how we need to work with the citizens today, the citizens that are in transition, who have been flooded out, the citizens who remain at Trent Court, that's what we're talking about, not the future, but today, because there's some need today, and I just want to make sure we're communicating. I want to make sure that we have a strong board and a strong executive director that is leading the charge, and that's why I'm here today.
Alderman Odom.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank each and every one of you that took the time to come today. This is the middle of the work week meeting, it's almost eleven-thirty, that means we've been here for an hour and a half. I think some of us have jobs we probably need to get to at some point in time, so hopefully this thing is winding up. I appreciate all the comments that's been made, appreciate the meetings and the time and communication we've had with Mr. Blaney and some of the board members since the hurricane, and even before the hurricane. There's been a lot of things discussed today, Craven Terrace was one, Mr. Frederick, I believe you brought that one up. You know, I think back over the previous term of the board, how many meetings we had as board members of the New Bern Housing Authority and New Bern Board of Aldermen to make that project happen. We haven't had many of those meetings lately. And the mayor started this meeting out talking about communication. You know, in my business, we have a structure where we have sales reps and store managers that drive our business. If I have a problem in a store or a market, I sit down with the store manager and the sales rep, and we have a heart-to-heart discussion, and we find out what the problems are and we fix them. And I think that's what's missing lately from this joint venture between the New Bern Housing Authority and New Bern Board of Aldermen. No disrespect to Mr. Blaney or Mr. Stevens, but they're paid staff members, they take direction from our two boards. Our two boards are at the top, we set the policy and the vision, they're paid to carry that out. When we have conversations about emergency evacuation plans, and we have a plan, that's where the boards have to set that policy and direction, and that's the key missing piece that we have right now. So I want to try to wrap this up and make a couple of comments. I think that some deliverables that we can come out of this meeting with today is, we need a joint work session between the two boards. And I would look to the mayor as the leader of this board, to the chairman, whoever that may be at this point in time, or the Housing Authority Board. Again, this is not Mr. Stevens and Mr. Blaney show, this is the board show, and it's time for the two boards to come together and set that policy and set a date, and let's get together and hash out some of these discussions. As far as the size of the board, Mr. Attorney, I believe we would have to pass a resolution to make that change?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion today that we direct City Attorney to come back at our next meeting Tuesday night with three options, a five, a seven, and a nine. That way, all those are in our package, we can deliberate between now and then, but whichever one we choose from, we... one we choose from, we wouldn't have to put it off to another meeting to make that decision. And if we decide to leave it the way it is, then we don't have to do anything. But at least those three pieces would be in our agenda, we could make that decision. So that's my motion.
I would like to amend that motion to only include seven and nine because I believe even Mr. Banks said five is too minimal. Where 11 is too onerous, so I think I would rather just see two options, a seven and a nine.
I'd leave it the way it is. That way, if we want to have that discussion, we can. I don't really see, if we're not going to use it, then that's fine, but it'll be there if we do.
I second his motion.
Second. Oates' motion?
Yes.
Do you have a motion and a second? Is there a discussion? Yes, sir. Now, is there any discussion about the motion? The motion is that three options be available, five, seven, and nine. Is there any other discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Mr. Amson, I know you wanted to speak, so come right back up.
And for the record, Joe Anderson, 413 Skysale Boulevard. I want to take this opportunity to thank the staff that I worked with. I agree with some of the preceding comments that the staff has worked diligently to try to meet the needs of the residents as best they could. There are some legitimate complaints out there and we certainly need to do better, the Board moving forward in terms of communications. Now, I do want to make two final comments. One, it's all about the residents. We all agree on that. It's also about the money. And one of the things I want to make sure that everyone clearly understands, the Housing Authority is fiscally sound, fiscally responsible, money in the bank. We could have blown through all that money with the hurricane very easily. I know Mr. Blaney has taken a few hits today and some of them may be well deserved. But I will say this, in terms of managing the funds of the Housing Authority, there were opportunities to just blow through the money. When we hired a mitigation company that we paid about $150,000 for, we had bids out there for two and three times that much. We could have easily selected one of those. Even in terms of the FEMA coordinator that we're using, we could have piggybacked on the FEMA coordinator that you folks are using and maybe spent a significant amount of money. We chose to go another way. I think it's going to be more efficient. We did husband the money very carefully. We looked at our money very carefully. And the last thing I want to make mention is, the staff is right now working all in one room on folding tables. And they've been working that way since the storm hit. So in addition to all of the other recovery efforts, they have still been working under the pressure of not having their small offices that they had before. They're all in one big room, working off of tables, and they are still maintaining their work ethic just as they were before the storm. So I do want to commend them. They work very closely with the residents. They take their job seriously. And the last thing, I said two, I got one more. The reason we have legal support, the Banks Corporation, the Banks Law Firm, and Warden Smith, when you look at the HUD regulations and you get a deeper understanding of them, you're not going to run this Board without good legal support. It's expensive, but it's well worth it. There are just too many liabilities to do things without legal support. You have to have that in a Housing Authority. So whatever you do going forward, before you eliminate your legal support, think long and hard about it. It's well needed, well, money well spent. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Anderson, did the Board apply for FEMA for temporary office space? Because that certainly will provide you temporary office space.
Well, I'm not 100% that we did that. When I transitioned off, we were in the process of going out to the market to send an RFP, RFQ for responses on temporary office space. If you guys have got some temporary office space that they could use, it may or may not work. One thing nice about them being in the New Bern Towers is at least they're close to the residents right now. So that works well. But at some point, they need some relief. They need to be in spaces that are close by. We've got some good options, we just haven't followed through on it yet.
Well, wherever you go, if you go with temporary office space on-site or if you have to rent office space, it's all something that can be applied for through FEMA.
Yeah, we are, we have that. Thank you, Alderman Astor. Thank you. Thank you all, by the way.
Thank you.
Any other business to come forward at this time, sir?
Motion adjourned.
Motion and second to adjourn. On favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Meeting is adjourned.